It's good to see you this morning. Thank you for being here. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Our Chairman Bob Lucy is absent this morning. Vice Chair Marsha Burke Bigler.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
And Commissioner Herman is absent this morning. County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Liborelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, the next item is Item Three, which is Public Comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda. The Commission will also hear a public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person as well. And comments, please, are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you. I have a list of speakers and I will call your name and then I'll call the second name. Please be prepared to come forward and speak. First on the list is Ms. Darlene Hesse.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm here in to support Wild Creek and I think to lose Wild Creek would be a terrific loss for the city sparks and Washoe County and everyone. And I see there's so many golfers that are out there having a wonderful time on my way to come over here. And I think to tear down a $30 million Washoe County golf course that is only maybe three more years before the affluent water is paid for, that would be a great loss to the community. I can't imagine how you could possibly make that up. That just doesn't, just doesn't seem right to me. And I want to know, isn't, isn't there some sort of a budget for a school? We get together, our little group, and we talk about the expense of this. I think it's going to be astronomical and we're like number one choice. That's not a very good idea of the people. I mean, common sense wise, my goodness, we need to save money for these kids. We don't need to have these fancy schools that are so outrageous in cost. We need education and buildings in a, in an area that isn't so costly. And I, I'm just here to support Wild Creek and for people in this area, it'd be a terrible loss and the people and the golfers and the animals. And I hope that open space that you really consider, that would be such a tremendous loss to all of us. And I hope you really take a good look at this one. It's, it's going to be a sad day for all people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Tracy Hall and after that, Ms. Tammy Holdstill. Good morning, Ms. Hall.
Good morning. Tracy Hall, for the record. I am a, was, I said this last time, a resident of Lemon Valley, still not in my home. So, I'm here today to challenge the Commissioner Board because Lemon Valley needs a hero. And I'm challenging you all to be our hero. We have one example, the family, the walls, they are senior citizens and they're living as their camp, as if they're camping. How is that okay? Seven months later, they're still living in a travel trailer in somebody else's yard. Example two, you have families that were able to move home. They're trying to rebuild their lives, but yet, come winter, they might be flooded again. So what's the point? It's wasted money. Example three is me and my husband, still in temporary housing. Horse is still boarding Cold Springs. It's costing me $225 extra a month on top of the travel expenses. I have to go out and see her on top of vet bills. Believe it or not, horses are a, a living being. My horse misses me. Hey, my horse sees me and she licks me in the face. You tell me how many horses you see do that? She needs to come home and be with me. It's not fair. Lemon Valley needs a hero. Why don't you guys set an example for your community and be that hero? Understand, we're still getting temporary housing, but for how long? Duane Smith said he was going to reach out to those 10 homes. I haven't heard from him. It's been two weeks. Here I am, still not knowing what my future holds. At this point, my husband and I want to leave Nevada, leave Washoe County altogether. We've been here our whole lives. It's not fair that we don't feel like we matter. You guys really need to come up with a plan to help us out out there. The lake's not going away. It's still there. Winter is knocking on our door. We were just out at our property this last weekend moving stuff. We had to flip a camper shell over like a boat, walk through that disgusting water on my property to get it out of there. That's just disgusting. It's not okay. When are we going to get some answers? I'm still waiting. Still waiting. It's not okay. I understand you had a grandbaby. I have a grandbaby. She has no future out there now. Doesn't that break your heart?
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Tammy Holdstill.
And for the record, Ms. Holdstill provided a handout which I'll distribute to the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Tammy Holdstill, for the record, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. I'll start with some good news. The state of Nevada Water Resources has approved the refurbishing of the Estrada well after lots of twisting arms and stomping feet. Also, it's nice that Washoe County has been fulfilling one of their things that they had decided to do, which was give some of the flooded area, homes in Idaho area dirt so that they can try and build around their property to protect the water from coming back in. We still have a lot of other issues, though. I'd like to bring to your example again, the Black Rock Desert where Burning Man was at. Everybody said, "Oh, I don't know if we're going to be able to have Burning Man because there's so much water out there." But by the time Burning Man came, that playa was dry. Our playas should be dry because we're exactly like them. So what changed from there to here? What are the differences between where that playa's at and where our playas are? I can tell you, first of all, there's pumping into Golden Valley aquifer and the Cold Springs aquifer. Nobody has ever mapped to see where those aquifers feed to. Also, speaking of doing aquifers, I put out on the Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery page a article from the Reno Gazette Journal from October 2016. We've all been told that that fiddler line is dry, but yet, in the Reno Gazette Journal, it's showing that that aquifer, or that fiddler line is wet and is also pumping water into the Lemon Valley aquifer. Okay? So now we know that there's pumping going in all these aquifers. So water cannot absorb into that playa. Then you also have building in water retention areas instead of the water being able to hold and soak in, in those areas before coming to the lake. Now they come directly to the lake. The lake's got too much water. You also have the fact that Washoe County has not maintained the culverts like they're supposed to. They also have known since 70 whatever that Idaho floods because there is only one outlet to the lake. Why is it when there's only one convergence, and you've known this for all these years, that you still allow only one convergence? As many times as I've seen you guys redo before the city of Reno took over, which I understand some of the city Reno's here, fix it. Make it so there's more than one area going over to that lake. It needs to be done. Thirdly, Lemon Drive, those HESCO barriers are going to be damaged. There is a blind corner. People are passing. They think it's their raceway now. You guys need to be taking care of it. Washoe County and the city Reno need to patrol it because there will be a head-on before you know it. And then with the speed that they're going, when the snow comes, there are going to be an accident.
Thank you, Ms. Holdstill. Next is Mr. Sam Denae and then Mr. Ryan Gershman.
Sam, Denae, Denae, that's me, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno Government. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I have gravitas, background, credentials that outweigh all of the creden, almost all of the credentials of all the bureaucrats in the community. If anybody wants to challenge it, you got three minutes to come up here and say, "Sam, you really don't have that many credentials." I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno, starting from saving Burning Man through, through saving the Air National Guard when they wanted to get fighters and I ordered them to get C-130s and they got C-130s, all the way up to nominating the county manager who I'm begging him or asking him to use his, use his gravitas to try to get a job for the man who was almost the mayor of Reno and for some reason, he's being, anyway, he's not able to get a job here because I don't know why. He's very talented. He was almost the mayor of Reno. As a matter of fact, he was ahead in the vote count until they stopped counting his votes back in 2010 as a Marine Corps veteran, my son. At any rate, I wasn't going to go too far into that. I'm, I'm responsible for 92. I've had spent more time on the real battlefields of patriotism in Reno than all of those, than all of those millionaire football, Kaepernick and all those millionaire football players added together, real time on these battlefields. But the media, the Reno media wacko freaks are so scared in their pantyhose and pants of Sam Denae that they can't see straight. Those people should be, I got a, I got a policeman over here standing, looking, guarding at me, standing at attention, parade dress. He should be over there, he should be over there investigating those, the Reno Gazette. They are a bunch of low-life people who have no, they were trying to destroy Reno. The Reno Gazette and most of the rest of the media, TV, radio, should all be dismantled. I've been working on that for years and years and years and I'm actually working somewhere along the way on the Reno Gazette. Got rid of most of their reporters, but guess what they got now? Two of their reporters have, guess what name? What are the, all the names? Two of the reporters that I'm dismantling, they're bringing the new reporters. One's named Sam, the other's named Sam. They're bringing two Sams. What are the chances? Are those aliases out there, guy? At any rate, we got this school bond tax that I was the driving force to get approved, but I said, it's an infinite school tax. The Reno Gazette wrongfully calls it a billion-dollar tax. It's an infinite tax that never ends. And I'm telling you, I was a driving force, but those people over there on the other side of the hill, our Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex, Tesla, Switch, all those people, they should be paying those taxes, not, not you citizens out there. They're the ones causing the need for all these schools and this brouhaha. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denae.
Thank you for not arresting me. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Nice smiley face.
Mr. Ryan Gershman. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Ryan Gershman, for the record, I'm here to briefly ask that you keep in consideration with the restructuring of the cabs, that each ward is individual. There are members within those communities that have different needs and different concerns than different wards within the county. And whatever influence you have, to keep the integrity of those cabs in place, I ask that you consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cliff Lowe. Good morning, Mr. Lowe.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and other members of the Commission. Good morning, Mr. Manager, Mr. Madam County Clerk, Mr. Liborelli, and our technical person. Because I've been out of the country most of the last four weeks, I hope you understand that I don't stick around for, I don't know when, the agenda item that I wanted to address comes up, that happens to be actually the last item on the agenda. And hopefully, it won't surprise that that's an item that I wanted to speak to. Item 15, update on wildfire, a wildland fire season. Perhaps you recall several weeks ago, I came to speak before you and implore, ask you to look at what can be done to actually reduce the number of fires. Today, there's a report to be given. It has the Manager and Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. I will plan to watch on streaming video or on archive video what those reports show. I hope you'll drill down on, on that report. One of the, one of the questions I think that needs to be answered is, for the fires that have affected our area, not necessarily actually been burning our area, but including fires that we've been downwind, what percentage of those fires are human-caused, caused by human action? Because those, the ones that are caused by acts of God, natural causes, pretty much not much we can do about them, but try and fight them and ask people to be prepared. And a lot of the effort that, that seems to take place seems to be about asking people to create defensible space and have, be ready to go. And those are all valuable things, but those are kind of like treating the symptoms, not the disease. The disease is the wildfires. So I hope you'll, I hope you'll, you'll seek that, the reports that we get, if not today, then you'll ask the people providing the reports to come back to you and answer what, how many of those fires are, are believed to be human-caused? And also, what is it costing in taxpayer dollars? Not just how many people were there, some of the statistics that have been given in some of the previous reports. Because I believe you'll agree that two of the charges that you have as elected commissioners are to promote public safety and to be responsible stewards of public money. By taking steps and looking into what are the causes of these fires, you can take steps towards, I hope you'll find steps to take toward improving public safety and to reduce the cost to the taxpayers. This season, we hope, I'm sure we all hope, is coming to an end soon. So-called season, I'm not really crazy about that terminology, but we hope that, that the fires are behind us. But let's not forget about this particular season. I would ask you to, to ask the Manager to ask his staff and TM to look at ways that can be done, things that can be done to reduce the number of fires that impact our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the Board. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, our next item is Commissioner, County Manager's announcements, reports, updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas. I have one announcement regarding today's agenda, and that is regarding Item 5G3, which we will be removing from today's agenda. That's update from the Sheriff's Office on the jail. We're moving, we'll move that to the, to the 10th of October, so we will have a full board. I know there's interest from all Board members on that item.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one announcement. I had the opportunity, the, no, the pleasure, really, of attending the Palmer Engineering Building renovation. And I, I'm not sure whether people realize how fine our engineering program is at UNR. I mean, it's, it is world-class and we have, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the Palmer Engineering Building, which was specifically mechanical. They, they left the entire building as it was, the facade, but then they, they gutted it and redid all the classrooms. But, you know, we have, I believe, the finest seismic lab in the world. It's, I mean, we just have an amazing engineering program. And so I was, I was honored to represent us there and I just thought that I would bring that up. And there was quite a number of people that came out and some of the things that they're doing and some of the things that they are teaching are cutting-edge. And it's, it's just a pleasure to have it in our town. And that's all I have today, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. I, only announcement that I have that I thought that my colleague would also mention is that we're going on a road trip to Winnebago and for the Nevada Association of Counties' annual meeting, starting either today or tomorrow, depends what time we get out of here, and looking forward to seeing all of our peers across the state in fine Winnebago and bringing back some best practices for emergency management, wildland fires, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing else, anybody? All right, Mr. Manager, let's move to the consent items.
Madam Chair, your consent agenda is represented in Items 5A through 5G5 on the agenda today. And as I had mentioned, we would ask to remove Item 5G3.
Motion to approve with the removal of 5G3?
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? Oh, I, I see Mr. Sam Denae on the list. I'm sorry. Mr. Denae, would you like to speak regarding something on the consent agenda? Mr. Denae, which item are you speaking on?
I'm speaking on Item 5.
The entire thing, okay.
I think that's what it's, Sam, Denae, Denae, trying to be the nicest guy in town, but every time, sometimes I had to fight my way to the podium. It was any, I had my consent request in to speak on this idea and whatever, and I don't want to be a curmudgeon, but anyway, typical person would have said, "Oh, boy, I don't have to talk. They didn't see my card up there." And I noticed we've got our, my friendly bodyguard over coming here. I love when that happens. It really makes me feel more comfortable. Actually, it kind of, it kind of inspires me. I love, I love law enforcement, when they protect lives and property, law enforcement and fire department and those kind of people. They're my favorite people in town, along with the judges, too. Always be nice to the people who have your, have your life in their hands. But anyway, we, what we have here is the consent agenda, which for those brand-new people in the audience and out there and watching the Sam Denae on the YouTube show and the other television channels, the consent agenda for the folks, and it is important to know, I'm speaking on that, it's important to know that the consent agenda is where they're going to have, in this case, about five or eight different items, all on one agenda, and they're going to vote for them without any discussion unless somebody up there pulls it off. And it should be theoretically housekeeping-type operations. And I look on here and there's some things for $60,000, $90,000, $40,000 for this and that, and here's $100,000 and this and that, you know? You know, some numbers that are pretty big to be just voted on without any discussion. But I'm not, I'm not criticizing it and I'm not speaking against any of these items, although there is the other aspect of the open media law. By the way, for those, everybody back there holding one of these agendas in their hand, looking at the consent agenda, the most readable consent agenda in all of Nevada. And why is it so readable and citizen-friendly? Not totally, but citizen-friendly is because, nice smiley face, because Sam Denae had to turn in an open media law violation complaint against the, the preparation of the entire agenda. Now we've got it, they've raised, it's a bigger font so you can read it. It's, everything's fairly well-described and so you know what's going on, on the consent agenda and the agenda, which is the way the open media law of Nevada says these agendas are supposed to be. Although, there's one on here, I'm going to have to read it out. I don't know if a citizen would really know what's going on. It says 5C2. Approve a request to initiate proceedings to amend the Washoe County Code pursuant to request by Commissioner Lucy and direct the county clerk to submit the request to District Attorney for preparation of a proposed ordinance pursuant to the Washoe County Code 234984. Who knows what that's all about? Come on, give me a break. Nobody knows what that's about. They just want to change, just all of the codes or any, whatever. Anyway, thank you for, thank you for listening to me and obeying.
Thank you, Mr. Denae.
Thank you over there. Thank you.
I have no further public comment. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a block, Mr. Liborelli?
Madam Chair, just a procedural note. Because there are only three Commissioners present today, it will take unanimous vote to pass any item on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Yes, and for the purposes of the Clerk, I know you're already doing this, but would you please note that Commissioner Lucy and Commissioner Herman are not here for these votes? Mr. Commissioner Hartung, I believe you have a block vote for us?
I do, Madam Chair, and I'll, I'll make a suggestion, and if it's the pleasure to change that, I'm, I'm happy to do that, but then I'd also like to move Item 14 up, the reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 65 right after we do the block vote. And my recommendation for a block vote is Items Number 10, Items 11, 12, and 13.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you want to read those?
Do I have a second?
Oh.
Oh, sorry, second.
Happy to read those now.
Okay. Now you can read those.
Item 10 is recommendation to approve the calendar year 2018 Health Benefits Program for Employees, Retirees, and Their Dependents at an approximate annual cost of $53.5 million and authorize the Director of Human Resources Labor Relations to execute all insurance contracts and service agreements pertinent to the health benefits program. Item 11 is recommendation to approve Washoe County Family Medical Leave Act policy. Item 12 is recommendation to approve the Work Program Volunteer Agreement between the County of Washoe Department of General Services and the Boys and Girls Club of Truckee Meadows to provide available work crews to perform community services on a volunteer basis at the Donald W. Reynolds Facility, the William N. Pennington Facility, and the Bresson Avenue Facility. The agreement will be effective upon execution and shall remain in effect for a period of two years. And Item 13 is recommendation to approve Community Development Block Grants from the Nevada Governor's Office of Economic Development in the amount of $98,750 with $13,250 cash match for the Gerlach Economic Development Plan, grant period retroactive from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and $80,000 with a $10,000 cash match from UNR for Nevada Small Business Development Center Counseling and Training, grant period retroactive from July 1, 2017 through December 31, 2018. And if approved, authorize Chairman to execute grant documents and to authorize the County Manager to sign the sub-grant agreement between Washoe County and the University of Nevada Reno Small Business Development Center in the amount of $80,000 with a $10,000 cash match. And approve the resolution necessary for the same and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I see no public comment. And so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Please cast your vote. Please check your vote. Motion carries. And once again, without our two Commissioners who are working on behalf of the county and one in DC and one in Winnebago. Okay. And if it, if it meets the pleasure of the Manager, I agree with Commissioner Hartung and we should go straight to 14 since there's only three of us, so if...
So I would make a motion to amend the agenda to move 14 up, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move 14 up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we will go to Item 14 and I don't, Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly. Item 14 is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 65 of the Washoe County Code, expanding the use of the 911 telephone line surcharge.
And do, oh, 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 that's right. Madam Clerk, this is an introduction and first reading. Would you please read it for us?
I will, Madam Chair. Thank you. And this will be Bill Number 1785, an ordinance amending Chapter 65 of the Washoe County Code by expanding the permissible use of the 911 telephone line surcharge to include the purchase and maintenance of portable event recording devices and vehicular event recording devices in accordance with the 2017 Nevada Legislature's enactment of Senate Bill 176 by clarifying the powers and duties of the 911 Emergency Response Advisory Committee by adding the definitions of law enforcement agency, portable event recording device, and vehicular event recording device, and by amending the advisory committee membership in terms of appointment. We just need an introduction.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung?
I move to introduce Bill Number 1785 with the second reading to occur on October 10, 2017.
Thank you. And do we have any public comment on this?
I don't see anyone signed in, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. In that case, I guess we're ready, Mr. Manager, to move back to our presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will go next then to Item 6, which is an appearance with the Eddie House. This is a presentation update regarding data outcomes and the vision of the Eddie House going forward. This was requested by Commissioner Jung.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome. I'm really short. Thank you for having me. My name is Michelle Gere and I am the Executive Director of the Eddie House, which is our homeless youth drop-in center on Sixth Street. Oh, which way am I doing here? Okay, there we go. As I mentioned, we are located at 423 East Sixth Street between Record and Valley. We serve primarily non-system youth, so these are kids that are not affiliated with any other programs or facilities here in town. in town. These are kids living on the street. Last year, we saw 504 individuals, but this year, our numbers have gone through the roof. So from January until August 2017, Eddie House has served 625 homeless youth and had over 6,000 interactions. We anticipate by end of year, we will see over 700 individual kids and have close to 8,000 or 9,000 interactions. It's getting worse. So we are the central intake and assessment facility for all homeless youth in northern Nevada ages 12 to 24. We focus our programming on the 18 to 24. Less than 13% of our visitors are under the age of 18, and they are referred to Washoe County Social Services or Reno Police Department. This is a Nevada problem, especially a northern Nevada problem. 76% of our kids are from Washoe County, 6% are from rural Nevada. We focus initially on basic needs, showers, clothing, food, and a safe space for these kids to be off the streets. As they come to Eddie House and they form relationships with staff and each other, we then move into medical, dental, and education services as well as psychosocial education. So really focusing on those social and emotional skills that you need to become productive members of our community. We have life skills and goal setting. We really focus on job skills. I can tell you that in the past year, 120 of our young people have managed to secure employment as a result of being involved in our programming. We also provide mental health, addiction counseling, healthy relationships. Many of our kids come from domestic violence situations or violence in the home. The top three reasons for Eddie House youth to become homeless is violence in the home, child abuse, and drug and alcohol abuse in the home. We also focus on music therapy, grief and loss therapy, and art therapy. 93% of our kids have experienced a serious or significant loss of a parent or primary caregiver. We are 100% trauma-affected. 59% of our kids have received treatment for mental health. 60% have no education. They have not finished their high school diploma or GED, and 70% of those kids had an IEP or 504 plan while they were in schools. As almost 70% of our kids are from Washoe County, this is, this is very significant. 89% of our kids have been arrested at least once. 92% live actually on the streets, in the motels, or they couch surf. Many of our kids are sleeping in trees in downtown Reno, and we recently lost a young man, a favorite of staff, who died from a bacterial infection from sleeping in the weekly motels. It attacked his heart, and he did pass away at St. Mary's. 58% of our homeless youth, if you think about our numbers, 625, 58% of those kids have exchanged sex or labor for food or shelter. Overall, Nevada ranks fifth in the nation for homeless persons who are unsheltered. I will tell you that I heard from the city of Reno that Nevada now has the fastest-growing homeless youth population in the country. Our median rent is 875 and continues to go up. Many of our kids are unemployed or underemployed and cannot afford median rent, so we really need to focus on the education piece and, and keeping them stable at night. The U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness estimates that the average cost to a city for a single homeless person to be between $30,000 and $50,000 a year. We estimate that Reno or Washoe County spends about $40,000 per individual. This means that if half of Eddie House youth are arrested, use the shelter or the ER, it's going to cost taxpayers over $10 million a year. It also brings blight and crime downtown. I know that this has been an issue for the county as well as the city, and a higher rate of human trafficking, which is something that we are dealing with on a daily basis. Homeless youth are very different than adults. They do not identify as homeless, so even when they come into Eddie House, we do track all data. We are a data-driven agency. We ask them where they slept the night before, and oftentimes, they will say, "My home." We know that they live in an alley or in a tree, so we do understand that that is not accurate, and you have to drill down a little bit. So they also view this as a bump in the road. 75% of homeless youth will realize mental illness before the age of 25, and we do understand that the data shows that if you can intervene before the age of 25, they don't become homeless again. Less than 8% of our homeless youth use the shelter citing safety concerns. The point-in-time count for 2017 shows similar data. So only 17% of those kids access the adult shelter. 51% of those surveyed lost their housing over sexuality or gender identity. They have ongoing issues with courts and health. These are some reasons why homeless youth don't use the adult shelters, and, and really, it's, it's definitely safety, for sure. And that's what our kids report to us. The Eddie House today is a little bit different. We're very unique in that we provide relationship-based programming. Everything is about that human connection and the social and emotional skills. We really focus on those soft skills, eye contact, handshaking, and making those genuine connections. Oftentimes, our kids have never had that, and they've never had an adult they can trust. All of our resources are at a single location. Eddie House partners with over 25 agencies in this community, and we're always looking for new partners. It's really about the kids and meeting them where they're at. We provide a physically and psychologically safe space. We have 50 kids a day that we see. Our largest day was 74 youth, and I can tell you that we had 74 youth in a space of less than 1,000 square feet with no conflict. And that is because we really focus on those social and emotional skills. We have behavior contracts. They are enforced. We do plan for a 24-hour center. That's, that's upcoming. Hopefully, in the next four to six months, Eddie House will expand to be a 24-hour center. We're looking for 50 beds, a commercial kitchen, therapy and classroom space so that we can continue to provide those resources overnight. We will continue to partner with agencies and really be the first stop in a continuum of care that will end youth homelessness and has the potential to end homelessness in Washoe County and in downtown Reno. If you have any questions or you would like a tour, I invite each and every one of you to come by Eddie House. My email is there along with my phone number. I do tours all the time. Come in and see, meet our kids, and, and take a look at what we're doing. Look at our data. We do have that available for anyone who is interested. And thank you so much. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Gere. We really appreciate you coming, and the statistics are frightening that we have so many children who are in need of help here in Washoe County. Commissioner Jung?
Well, I just want to thank you, Ms. Gere, for your passion and commitment, but most importantly, I, I want you to talk about what you did in the Bronx and what your educational background is and how, how it's so unusual, your master's degree.
Sure. I actually graduated with my undergrad at, from UNR in psychology and genocide, Holocaust, and peace studies, and decided to go get a master's degree. I went to Columbia University in New York City. I was chosen as one of 27 management fellows, so I studied clinical social work, but additionally, I was one of 27 individuals that were lucky enough to study nonprofit and public management along with my social work degree, how to run a nonprofit or public agency effectively, efficiently, and be the most impactful. We were trained that a nonprofit should exist to solve a social problem. And so I did my practicums and worked in the South Bronx at one of the toughest high schools in the United States, teaching social and emotional skills to overage, undercredited middle school students and then high school students. The task was to, actually, the task was to get the kids to sign off and, and drop out. I feel like there's no such thing as a throwaway population, so I asked the question, "Why are you not in school?" And I found that 1/3 of my caseload in the South Bronx had experienced the loss of a parent or primary caregiver. So connecting with them and having a grief and loss group actually increased attendance by 85% there. I knew that when I came to Reno, actually for vacation, and saw the Eddie House, I had a vision for a national model. I knew that we could get these kids to be productive members of our community if we invest a little bit of time and a little bit of connection. And that has worked so far. When I came to Eddie House, we saw maybe five or 10 kids a day, and then it's all word of mouth. They come in now. We are seeing with, with the housing shortage and increase in the population, so we just need to really get them where they're at and, and teach them the skills that they'll need to be productive.
And I really do urge you to go do the tour. It's a fascinating program. It's, and Ms. Gere will go, you know, she can talk for days about the data and, and the, the young people that are there. And, you know, I think this points to something, and I'm glad that the councilman's here as well, is that we have a huge problem in this community with homelessness, not just homeless youth, but homeless adults. And we have the money to house them. We have no land. So this is a siren, really, at this point, that we need to find land, either the city's surplus land, county's surplus land, or a philanthropist who will donate us land, preferably, you know, on, near a bus line, et cetera. But we're in a land crisis, not even really a money crisis. The Reno Housing Authority just bought 36 units from the Winemucca man camp that didn't go through for the mining, and we have no place to put them. And so I, I just, I think we need to get serious as a community of starting to find this land and, and building homes. People should not be sleeping in trees, in bushes, down at the river. It's, it's a social crisis, and it's a moral crisis, as far as I'm concerned. So I appreciate all that you do. I'm glad you came back home for a vacation and stayed. And Ms. Tancer, thank you as well for being here. And anything we can do to help, you know I'm there. And I, did you get the Planned Parenthood sex training?
I did.
Okay, good.
Yes, we're good. Thank you for that.
That's the number-one thing the kids ask for, job training and sexual health. That's not what adults ask for.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much.
I appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartong?
You had more questions, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just had a fast question, Ms. Gere.
Sure.
How are you funded? Who's, who's funding you?
I, I...
I know that that's a difficult question, and I know it can be from a myriad of sources, but, you know, if you sort of narrow it down, how are you funded?
Initially, when I first came in, we didn't have outcomes. We didn't have outputs, so I had to develop the programming, and it was a lot of begging, honestly, from the community. That's how we've been able to sustain with all of the data. Eddie House has an 11-page intake that all of the kids do. We recently heard from HUD that we have the best intake they've ever seen. It collects everything. So with that data collection, it tells a story, and we have started to apply to private foundations as well as individuals in our community, as well as bringing in federal, state, and local money to really serve this population.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong.
And Commissioner Jung won't mention it right now, but I'll mention it. We're trying to solve your land issue with some land that the Flood Management Authority owns. And so we are, and it's, it's actually a prime location for this type of a project, and it's where the old XL building is. There are some hurdles. We don't believe at this point that there is anything that we can overcome, so we're, we're looking forward to trying to solve that problem, and, and hopefully, we can, you know, work on some of these issues also.
That's fantastic. If, if we can have 120 kids just coming to a day program that get employed, if we had an overnight facility, they would all be employed and in school.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, that's, I, I, I understand completely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. or Commissioner Hartong. Thank you, Ms. Gere. Appreciate you coming, and the information is just phenomenal, and I'm glad you guys are doing such a good job. And you have a real advocate on your side over here with our wonderful Commissioner Jung, who works on these projects.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, our next item then is item 7, and this is a presentation and update on the Community Health Alliance. And Mr. Duarte is coming down to provide that update.
Good morning.
Good morning. And good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Charles Duarte, and the CEO for Community Health Alliance. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. Talk a little bit about our organization and what we're trying to do in the community. So I will go ahead and hopefully be elaborate this. Let's see. Ah, very good. So we are the largest nonprofit that no one's ever heard about. So CHA has been around for quite a while, but we are a tax-exempt organization and provide a variety of health services to the community, so primarily medical, dental, behavioral health, and as well as many other services. Our mission is to provide that type of service and high-quality services regardless of person's abilities to pay. And so we are not any longer but who we were. We were the former HAWK Community Health Center or Health Access Washoe County, started in 1995 by the Washoe County Medical Society, as well as the Sisters of San Rafael and the vision that they had for the St. Mary's Regional Medical Center when they originally founded it to do community work. And so in 2012, when St. Mary's is getting bought out by a for-profit corporation, they transferred all of their not-for-profit assets and programs, or many of them, to us. In fact, some of them to other organizations like Catholic Charities. But we were the primary recipient of, of those assets that they transferred, which included employees, health centers, mobile services, and a host of other services. So who we are today, we've got six health centers located in the Washoe County area. Down in the south, we've got a, a great little health center in Miguel Rivera Park, right by the Boys and Girls Club in Neal Road. A little farther north is our largest health center at the, on Wells Avenue at 1055 South Wells, which is our Wells Medical Dental Center. Right next door is the Center for Complex Care. It's an innovative center where we are using evidence-based practices to try to help people who have serious chronic medical problems, many of whom have other types of social issues, including homelessness. Oh, excuse me, back up a little bit and go through my map here. And so a little bit farther north, at the Community Service Center on Record Street, we have a health center located right next to the, the family shelter. And it's a great health center. We have medical, dental services and a variety of services, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We recently opened a health center in Sparks on Addy Boulevard, and it's offering medical, dental, and behavioral health services. And then far up in the north, we've got our Sun Valley Health Center. We use a team care approach to medicine, and what we really try to focus on is, is making sure that everybody's functioning at the highest level of their, their license or certification. And we feel that this is better care overall. It's also better for our providers, and that's always a problem when you're talking about a nonprofit trying to recruit providers nationwide, is, you know, being competitive with the likes of Renown and St. Mary's is tough. But these are some of the things that we do that make it possible. About our patients, which is the most important aspect of what we do, we've got about 30,000 patients, unduplicated belly buttons that we serve here in, in the Washoe County area, and that's a pretty large population of patients. About 90,000 visits. 60% of our patients are Hispanic, and about half of those actually have English as a second language. The majority of our patients are on Medicaid or Medicare, and about 20% are uninsured. So you can see the statistics there. Despite the increase in insurance coverage here in Nevada, about 20% of our patients remain uninsured. Most of those adults. We're a fairly large nonprofit. We've got about 270 staff located throughout our health centers. 70% are bilingual. We've got licensed clinical professionals of all stripes and colors. So you can see there are doctors, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, behavioral health providers, dentists, hygienists, pharmacists, and dieticians, amongst others. And these are our main services. So in terms of medical care, we are primary medical clinic throughout our system. The only thing we don't provide is obstetrics, and we have a great relationship with the Renown Pregnancy Center for those services. So the Women's, Infants, and Children's Program, we have the second Women's and Infants and Children's Program next to the county. It's about similar size. It's a little different in how it's organized. WIC at the county is more centralized. We're more community-based, and I'll talk about that in a bit. We provide behavioral health services to our patients. These are services to really help patients deal with some of their medical problems. And so the person with diabetes who we know quite often, if it's uncontrolled, will have depression, anxiety disorder, and all these things will help, helping them with those issues will help them deal with their diabetes or heart disease or any other chronic condition. And so we do integrated care in our system. We also have a low-cost pharmacy for uninsured and homeless patients and provide family dentistry at three of our locations. So I mentioned all our medical services. That's the list of them, everything except obstetrics. We do a lot of family planning work, as well as our, our basic bread and butter, which is family medicine in primary care. We have 10 locations for our WIC program, and I'm very proud of our WIC program because they've integrated into our medical services as well as our dental services. And so when we're doing presentations in the school about dental hygiene, we're also talking about nutrition and WIC. When we're doing medical presentations to our pediatric patients and our doctors are talking to them about the need for periodic screening for kids, we're talking to them about WIC. And so WIC is located in all our health centers, as well as in several freestanding health centers. And then courtesy of the Ronald McDonald House, we have a great WIC van that goes to 10 locations in the community, serving women and, and supporting breastfeeding, as well as nutrition in the community. I mentioned our behavioral health services, and so the primary recipient or benefactor of our... of our, our behavioral health services ultimately is a patient, but it's actually the primary care physician. And so the idea is that we're helping that primary deal with issues that the patient has, like overeating, anxiety, depression, and helping them deal with their medical problems. I mentioned our in-house pharmacy. We have a pharmacy located at our Wells Avenue Medical Dental Center, and also at our Record Street Health Center for the homeless. And then we hopefully will have one soon at our Sparks Health Center. In terms of serving the homeless, we've got about thirteen hundred homeless patients located throughout our system. So if anybody walks into any of our six doors and says, hey, I, I have an issue, I'm in transitional housing, I'm in a shelter, I'm doubling up, I'm couch surfing, we register them as homeless, and they automatically qualify for a list of free services. And so at each of our health centers, they can get their medical care, immunizations, lab services, family planning services, prescription medications, some dental work, as well as behavioral health services done for free. And we also have partnerships with others in the community to serve our homeless patients. At our, at the Community Service Center, we've got about eleven hundred patients there alone. But again, we provide homeless services at all our health centers. And these are some of the other services. We just opened a dental practice at our Record Street Health Center for the homeless, and so I think in four weeks, we've pulled about a hundred and twenty teeth, we've done about five or six amalgam fillings, three partials, and one full denture. So that's just, just on Thursdays. But our Dr. Fillmore there, he loves doing the work, and he's been very busy. The list of some of our dental services there, we do everything, but when it gets complicated, things like surgery, we have to refer out to specialists. We have mobile programs that go throughout the community, including partnerships with some county services here. So we have our mobile dental van, one of them, with two dental operatories going to the senior, the VOA Senior Center. We have our van going to the Pregnancy Center at Renown to, to work with pregnant women, as well as to the Locust Tree Health Center. And then we also are sending our van to Crossroads, and so we're seeing the patients at Crossroads in that sober-living environment with one of our dental vans. One of the things that we do in, in, in the school district is that we have a van that goes to twenty-seven Title I schools. And what we do is we do oral health education, nutrition education, and we put sealants and fluoride varnish on kids' teeth. So this would be second graders or six-year-olds, and then fifth or sixth graders, depending on how big the elementary school is. And so we're putting sealants on those kids' teeth. It's free to the kids, free to the families. If they have insurance, we ask that we, we be able to bill it, but if they don't, they get no charge. And so it's, it's free to all the kids in the Washoe County School District in these Title I schools. These are some of the additional services we provide, so we have health and wellness classes at many of our health centers. We support transportation services for our patients. We have a great healthy weight program, and we certainly would like to, to partner with the county in getting the word out about this program. There's a clinical component called the Healthy Weight Program, run by one of our pediatricians, Dr. Steve Shane, who noticed that the kids, particularly in the school district here, we're seeing increasingly obese levels or pre-obese levels. And the concern, of course, is that they're going to grow up to be obese adults, they'll get diabetes early in their life, and then from diabetes, they go on to things like renal failure and, and dialysis and transplant. And so we really want to try to stem that really early on and upstream. And so we're trying to identify these kids and work with the families to teach them better nutrition and better life skills to deal with their, with obesity. This is actually done through two partnerships that we have, the Food Bank. So our Healthy Weight Program, every, every class, which is Monday afternoon, our pediatrician, a psychologist, a nutritionist work with the families, and they get a bag of fresh vegetables, and so we make sure that they, they get those foods. We also have a pantry at our Wells Avenue Medical Center. Oscar, through a lot of his work with our health center, works with patients to get them insurance coverage. And these are some of the additional partnerships. And then these, this is our sliding fee option for patients who don't have insurance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. You know, one of the things that we're struggling with, and I urge the commission to think about calling your senators, your US congressmen and your senators, is the Graham-Cassidy-Hiller-Thompson bill that we think is going to be devastating to the state of Nevada and health coverage for our Nevadans. We know that it'll have a profound effect on our patients, but also on the community. And so if you care about health coverage for your community, call your senators and let them know that you don't support this bill. So thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and bringing this presentation to us, Mr. Duarte. This is such good information, and it's wonderful to know that there's a facility like yours that, in the community, that is helping with healthcare issues as it relates to homeless and, and, you know, anybody who simply can't afford to be, you know, have insurance or be taking care of themselves with private healthcare, so...
And we'd be happy to take any commissioners or staff on a tour of any of our health centers, so that would be, we'd be more than happy to do that. And I do have some gifts for the commission, as well as people in the audience, so I'd like to be able to pass them out. Of course, we're, we're all about safe and protected sex, and so we've got condoms for you, just in case.
[laughing]
Folks might need them. But I'll leave them with the secretary, and she can do as she pleases in passing them out to...
Yes.
To anybody in the audience who wishes to have some. Don't, don't take them all, though, okay?
Commissioner Jung has some questions also.
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duarte, and all the great work you're doing here.
You're welcome.
And it sounds like that this is a great expansion of Hock, and what Hock had formerly done.
It's grown.
I have a question, though. Why no obstre, obstre, obs... I knew I was going to say...
Obstetrics?
Obstetrics.
Primarily because we have a great partnership with Renown, and they've got a very first-class health, Pregnancy Center that we work with. We also work with St. Mary's. So right now, there's no reason for us to duplicate that resource in the community.
Okay, I just thought you were leaving women out, and...
No, 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 no. We have a pretty close relationship. In fact, our WIC van and our dental vans go to the Renown Pregnancy Center once a week to take care of pregnant women.
Okay, and then I have another question in terms of the, the oral hygiene that you teach the six-year-olds. I'm wondering, I, I know as a nonprofit, this is dicey for you, but we really tried to push through a fluoridation program for our water here in Washoe County, and had a lot of pushback, and frankly, a lot of ignorance as to why we shouldn't have fluoridation in the water. And I'm wondering if, do you get active in any policy issues like that, and could we count on you to, to be active next time this bill will come up again?
Well, yes, we, we are active in policy issues, because policy's not politics. And so if we see policy like the Graham-Cassidy bill that's going to affect people, we will speak out on behalf of our patients, or immigration issues, or DACA.
Absolutely.
We've been speaking out on that. And likewise, when Assemblywoman Joiner brought the bill forward at, at the assembly, we were hosting speaking events for her at our health center, and we are strong supporters, as is our dental director, Dr. Brandi Dupont. We provided testimony in support of it, because, again, it's not politics, it's policy.
That's right.
And, and this is something that, you know, eighty percent of, of water systems in the United States are doing for their citizens, and we should do it for ours.
I agree. And then I have a question about the extractions of teeth.
Uh-huh.
And it, it used to be, I don't know if this is true or false, but that many of the services that people uninsured or underinsured get when they have teeth issues is they just pull them. And then that creates a downward chain that then prevents them to get a job. Do you see where I'm going with this?
Yes.
So what is the policy about teeth pulling?
Well, for Community Health Alliance, again, we're not a free clinic, and so the, the most expensive part of any kind of dental work that we do would be laboratory work or things like parcels and dentures. And so what we try to do with patients who come in, and obviously, if they're coming in, they need an extraction, it's usually because they have an infection or an abscess. And then, and that means you have to act. And so a lot of the work we do up front with seniors and adults is making sure that we can get their mouths ready for, for restorative care. So unfortunately, a lot of that involves extractions. But what we try to do, if they, if they do want to do, go through a restorative treatment plan, what we try to do is spread it out so they can pay for it. Again, we give them very reduced rates, but we try to spread it out over time to make it more affordable. There are occasions, we had one recently with a homeless individual who had leukemia, who needed a bone marrow transplant. We rounded up five thousand dollars to have his teeth extracted in Renown Hospital, Renown Medical Center, because he, he had bleeding problems. So we were able to pull together some money from charitable donations to help pay for that. But, you know, otherwise, we ask people to pay what they can, and if not, we try to find charitable donations to support their needs.
I love what you do.
Well, thank you.
I think you have a great job.
And I'll make sure these get around to everybody.
And I think Councilman Doug Otto has a great job, and Councilman, I will be there on the tour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
One moment.
Yes.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Duarte, you, you mentioned dental on a number of occasions, and I have a family member who works in an ER...
Yes.
...as a physician. And one of the big things that they see is patients coming in, indigent patients with abscess and, and issues, dental issues. And of course, they're not set up to deal with it, and it's palliative, and they will typically give them painkillers, which in many cases exacerbates a problem of, of drug abuse. And so I'm wondering, do you guys work with the two ERs to ensure that, that these patients can potentially be referred to you, so that, I mean, they're just not set up to extract a tooth or to, you know, to deal with dental issues, period?
Yes, so the answer to all of the above is yes, and so we work with all three emergency departments on referrals, either from the emergency department or directly from the hospital, not just for dental, but for medical care. In fact, Renown has three staff members who do bedside discharge, and they can schedule patients directly into our, our clinic scheduling system.
Okay.
Next day or same day if they need follow-up. With respect to abscesses and emergency care, that is an issue, particularly, they see it Renown quite often.
And St. Mary's, that's, that's where...
And what, what happens with that is that when they're seeing that patient, the patient is often in an acute phase of infection.
Yes.
And so they'll need antibiotics and some pain medication.
Correct.
Hopefully, they're not getting an opioid or a narcotic, that they're getting just ibuprofen, which should be the appropriate treatment. But they have to go through a course of antibiotic treatment before we can pull the tooth. Otherwise, it's awfully painful.
Of course.
And we don't want to do that. And so we try to get them in. We have a next-day-or-same-day dentist who's able to take patients on a walk-in. We ask people to call and make an appointment. They'll have to wait, but we do have a dentist at our Wells Medical Dental Center who does same-day appointments for emergencies.
Would you leave your contact information with the clerk for me?
Absolutely, yes.
I'd like to follow up.
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, Mr. Duarte, thank you very much for coming today.
You're very welcome.
Very great information, and such a pleasure to know that there is this type of work going on with our underemployed, our homeless, our, all the people who are in need of help. So thank you very much. And Councilman Doug Otto, thank you very much for showing up and gracing our chambers, and it's very, very good to see you, and thank you for all your good work.
Thank you for the time.
Thanks. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, our next item is item eight.
Condoms.
And this is an informational presentation from the Trucky Meadows Regional Planning Agency regarding the 2017 Trucky Meadows Regional Plan Update. And Kim Robinson, Executive Director from the Regional Planning Agency, is here.
Good morning, Ms. Robinson.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. It's good to be here. I'm here today because we are starting the five-year update for the regional plan, and we've recently kicked off the public participation phase. And so we are going out to all of our partners, and we're trying to really get out there and share with folks what it is that the agency does, and what it is we'd like to talk about in this update. And I'd like to start, it's working, with a video that we've put together to describe for folks what the agency does.
TMRPA is the Trucky Meadows Regional Planning Agency, responsible for coordinating planning across Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. TMRPA is made up of the Regional Planning Governing Board, the Regional Planning Commission, and agency staff. By promoting collaboration and addressing growth, the agency ensures efficient use of resources. To accomplish this, TMRPA develops and maintains the Trucky Meadows Regional Plan. The regional plan is built upon the agency's various technical analyses. For example, the consensus forecast, which is a twenty-year look at population and employment Here, the locations of population growth are shown in red, and employment growth in In order to do this forecast, TMRPA tracks potential development. This flyover depicts areas mapped for future development. This allows for a comprehensive look at planned growth. Understanding development potential helps us to imagine different futures for our region, Here you can see a simulation of possible future development on currently vacant lots in Midtown and Downtown Reno. Scenarios allow us to assess potential impacts and make informed decisions about growth. Visit Plantrekymedos.org to get involved.
Thank you for that. So who are we? Well, as we mentioned in the video, TMRPA is designed to foster coordination and collaboration across the region around the use of land and issues of regional concerns, such as water, air quality, and roads. We do this across Washoe County with an emphasis on the more heavily populated areas in our region. As I mentioned previously, TMRPA maintains, develops and maintains, excuse me, a regional plan across a twenty-year horizon. A question I get asked a lot is why we should plan regionally, and the answer to that really is that growth knows no boundaries. You may live in Washoe County, you may work in Sparks, and you may play in Reno, but the need for various resources, such as water, roads, schools, those cross jurisdictional lines. Being a regional agency, we coordinate with a variety of other regional agencies in addition to the three jurisdictions, and we've got a sampling of those up here. Our data analysis that we've accomplished over the last five years has been used by various groups, such as the Economic Development Authority and the Western Regional Water Commission. In fact, since 2012, we've completed over forty collaborative projects and leveraged more than a million dollars from our regional partners, maximizing that investment of government funds. So why am I here today? Well, really, as I mentioned, it's because we're launching the public participation phase of the regional plan update. Our community has changed a lot in the last five years when we updated, whether it's our, our economy, our demographics, our use of land, there's been a lot of change. We expect to see more, and we want to be prepared. The regional plan is a perfect way to engage with this, since we talk about various areas, such as population, conservation, and infrastructure. So I'm here today to ask for the commission, and also those watching today, to join us and let your voice be heard. Please join us at Plantrekymedos.org, that's our website for the regional plan update. We have a survey out there that talks about growth. We will be doing about a survey a month. We'd like for you to sign up so that you can continue to take those surveys. It's about a three-to-five-minute survey. It's kind of fun, it almost feels like a game. So we're hoping that folks will be willing to do that. So Plan Trucky Meadows, join us, join the survey, and I appreciate your time today, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. It's good to see you, as always. Commissioners, any questions?
She doesn't want your questions.
Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Ms. Robinson, you said that you have a map that has all of approved but not yet built. Do you have that map for Washoe County?
We do have a map that describes approved and not built. There's various stages along the way. We track that development across all three jurisdictions. If that's something that Washoe County would like, we can talk offline, we'd absolutely give that to you.
I'd love a map like that, just so we can kind of see where the growth is going as well, because in as much as we want to manage growth, we also can't force people to use private property in a way that is best for our actual growth. The other question I have for you, and this is something just to think about, so the flyover showed like what Midtown would look like if we did infill development. Have we thought, as a region, to do some sort of incentivizing for developers to do infill? Because I know for them, bare dirt is cheaper and more profitable than trying to go inside, and that's the only way that I feel like we're going to avoid more sprawl than what than what we already have in this valley.
That's exactly right. The incentivization, incentivization, I think I got that right, of being able to kind of bring more density. We've certainly had quite a few conversations around that. I think one of the outcomes we'd like to see from the regional plan update is a kind of fund, if you will, a small development fund that allows maybe to help get started some of those pieces. That came out of our work with the Urban Sustainability Accelerator Group out of Portland State University. We, I'm pleased to say that we just did interviews yesterday on the RFQ for the regional plan update. We've got some really good candidates and that's one of the conversations we'll be having with them as well.
And then, is regional planning also in charge of developing affordable housing and how to incentivize that part of the pie?
I would not say at this point in time that we are in charge of it. At the moment, we have, at the regional planning governing boards' behest, are working with Trucky Meadows Healthy Communities, Enterprise Community Partners, to bring forward some information and also a roadmap towards an affordable housing strategy. I would like to say that we're a partner in that. But this is going, affordable housing is going to be something that we all need to partner on together.
Absolutely. And then, when you're looking at this, informing this regional plan and growth, I believe that it houses with you a way to engage those currently here and stuck it out with us for the recession, through the recession and through, and what they envision for our region to look like and what they need, but also reaching out to the new population to be certain that we're also supplying them with, you know, the daycare centers that they probably hope want and need. And I urge you to look at Sagaro, Arizona. Is Sagaro a, it's a cactus?
It's Suaro.
Suaro, Arizona, as a model. They had a big boom and they engaged the current residents, wants, needs, visions, and then also made sure to anticipate what the new residents were doing to come in. If you need the contact of this man, he does this all around the country. I feel like regional planning should house that and not all of us going every different direction. So if you could look at that, I think you'd get a lot of mileage in terms of the citizens here that are already kind of bucking, right? Because of the way the rents have gone up and traffic and all the things that we hear about. To engage them and let them also have a handle and information in this new wave.
That sounds like a wonderful opportunity. I will absolutely follow up with you and get that information. We are reaching out to the community in a variety of ways. The survey is one way. We're also doing various focus groups, whether it's kind of demographically or through kind of the topic itself. But we are always open to more suggestions around community engagement because that's really the name of the game on this one.
Right. And then I have, there seems to be this mindset with residents that develop all in the north because you don't have good views. What? We have wonderful views up here. I just, on the weekend, hiked Peavine. And that's remarkable up there. So I hope that informs your, you know, it's, I don't want growth to be said, it's all going to go here and you're all going to take it. I think that that growth needs to be spread around all the districts and all the county, trying to avoid sprawl.
Understood.
I mean, I think we've sprawled, but not sprawl anymore. So let's not value one population's opinion of the preciousness of their land versus another person's opinion. Because that seems to always be, you can't do it in the South. It's too pristine. And so they shove it all up to us in the North. No offense, Commissioner Burke Bigelow, she doesn't shove anything. But you get what I'm saying. The citizens really use that as an argument. And I think that is just institutionalized discrimination. So if we can balance that as well.
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Thank you so much, Kim, Ms. Robinson. It's great to see you and I'll see you again soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, first of all, I just want to thank the board for their indulgence on all the presentations today. We saw an opportunity to get several that we'd been wanting to do in. So thank you for that. And our next one is one that I'm actually very proud of. This is presentation and update on the Washoe Leadership Program. And I know we have several members of our Washoe Leadership Program here who are going to participate, I believe, in this presentation.
Ms. Enfield.
Good morning.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Vice Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our program. For the record, Gabrielle Enfield. I'm the county's grants administrator and the project lead for Washoe County Strategic Goal: Valued and Engaged Workforce. And I want to introduce our Washoe Leadership Program. We launched this project as a cross-functional initiative of our strategic goal, specifically to focus on an employee-led engagement program that supports leadership, collaboration, service, communication, and appreciation. And the project was launched in December with recruitment and our committees started meeting in January. So we're not yet into our first year. But we're off and running and we're going to give you a little bit of detail on what's been happening. Currently, we have 74 participants across 21 different departments. So it's been very well-received, very well-supported. Certainly, the support from the commission and the county manager. Department heads are very important to engaging, allowing our employees to participate and work on these great projects. What we seek to accomplish with the leadership program, we want to encourage and facilitate professional development, give employees an opportunity to build relationships across departments and within departments and strengthen our Washoe County team. Encourage and facilitate customer service culture. Support leadership opportunities, just giving employees ways and opportunities to lead and committee-specific objectives. So you'll hear more about these, each of what the committees are doing. But each committee defines, coordinates, and leads their own projects that you're going to hear a little bit about. So the way we're organized, we have five committees, giving and volunteering, recognition, training, learning, and leadership, events, and communication. And each of these committees has a, let me go this way, too. Each of these committees has a chair, a vice chair, committee members, as well as an advisor, which may be a manager or division or department head that provides that support and assistance to the committee as they're implementing projects on policy or questions or a little bit of that sponsorship. And then we have subject matter experts, which is a staff member, which is an expert in the content and function of that specific committee. We also, we have a steering committee, which is made up of those folks. Leaders from each committee identifies into providing direction for the whole program in, specifically in, when they collaborate. And I'm going to pass it on to the folks that are doing all the work on these projects. I'm going to, Donnie Lique, you're going, you want to introduce yourself? This is our vice chair of our steering committee, as well as our, I'm sorry, Donnie is the chair of our steering committee and Elise is our vice chair. And they're going to run you through each committee.
So I'm going to start with the volunteering and giving. And I feel extra passionate about this one because I'm actually part of it. And our mission is to support countywide efforts and activities that serve our community through volunteering and donations. So, so far, we've actually had some really nice accomplishments. We did the Lemon Valley Flood Donation Drive and had great success, lots of outpouring from the community. We collaborated with Can Prevent the Child Abuse Prevention Organization and we planted pinwheels for Child Abuse Prevention Month in many of the county complexes, which we have not done before. So we had them at the CAC Children's Cabinet, the, here at the Ninth Street Complex, the DA's Office, Center Street, the library. And then our group itself piloted the Ronald McDonald Chef Program. So we went and cooked dinner for all the families that were residing there. And it was such a humbling experience. The families were so appreciative and we had such a nice time that now, and this goes into part of our goals, we're launching it countywide. So we already have a group from the Comptrollers, who in October, they're going to cook dinner. In November, we have a group from Human Services, who's going to cook dinner. And we have a mixed group cooking Christmas Eve dinner for them. So we're also working on doing a Build Day with the Habitat for Humanity. And we've now participated in an item drive for the Homeless Youth Point in Time Count. So it actually goes beautifully with the Eddie House Project presentation today. So so far, and these are from county employees, the sheriff's office had donated toothbrushes, toothpaste, chapsticks, hand sanitizers, Human Services baby wipes, free haircuts, and a health navigator. And we've had, we're putting barrels countywide to get other item donations. So we've had a lot of nice success. And we have our recognition and events committee here. So they can answer more questions and give you more details, you know, if you have anything. So the recognition committee is to honor, celebrate, promote efforts and highlight the skills, performances, accomplishments, and services of Washoe County employees. So they've launched the Shining Star Program. And so they are recognizing employees countywide for good work they're doing, achievements they're doing. So their goals and future projects is the Employee Recognition Breakfast. And they're also assisting with the Washoe Impact Awards. And they're going to continue the Shining Star Program.
Thank you. Good morning. So I want to tell you about the Training, Learning, and Leadership Committee, of which I'm chair. The mission is to support-
Could you give us your name, please?
I'm so sorry. I'm Donnie Lique. I'm chair of the Steering Committee and Training, Learning, and Leadership Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mission statement is to support program development with identification and evaluation of existing new opportunities to ensure the needs of employees and the organization are met. So one of the first things we've done is the Leadership Speaker Series. A couple of months ago, we had a presentation in the chambers here on generations. We hope to continue doing that, hopefully do at least one speaking event every season, so a few times throughout the year. And one of the hopes for this is that if there are any particular subjects that department heads might be struggling with, could get more information on, that's one of the things that led us to do the presentation on generations. This fall, we're looking at one on mindfulness in the workplace. We also started our Leadership Library. So this is a collection of textbooks that help employees to be more effective in their work and to the public. And that goes along with that is the Leadership Book Club. We had our first meeting earlier this month. And that was an opportunity for those who had checked out one of the texts to get together, share their ideas about it, and talk about how to use the information to benefit their departments. Going forward, there have been a lot of encouragement to develop a mentorship program, especially maybe for new leaders within the organization, to learn from the ones who've been here a while. So we're working on that. The speaker series, like I said, we would love to see something more of like a TED Talks program where we can get more speakers, have that more organized and available. And ultimately, we would like to establish a longer-term leadership program that is maybe a little more involved than current resources that we have. There's a lot of need for that and benefits that could come of it.
So our Events Committee, their mission is to support countywide appreciation events, to honor and celebrate the Washoe County workforce.
Will you state your name for the record again, please?
Sorry, Elise Henricus. Build camaraderie among employees. So they've launched the Night at the Museum events. And so that's for county employees and their families. They had an employee picnic, which was fantastic. I heard great things about it. And they're going to continue the Night at the Museum events.
And then I'll give you a quick update on Communication Committee. Mission is to develop a communication program that provides ongoing input for effective employee-focused communication. So they're looking at ways for employees to be more networked. A lot of events and programs, things we do, they want to make sure that the employees know about that. So, for example, we have Inside Washoe, which is a great resource for information. As far as getting people to use that, they've done a neat thing where they have a sort of a treasure hunt that you can go through, find the secret button. But the whole purpose of that is really to get people onto the site and to become more familiar with the things on there. They've been really instrumental in helping the other committees with marketing events that they've done. So we look forward to working with them going forward on that. And then, just a quick update I'll give on the Washoe Impact Awards. Great example of something that all the committees have been able to come together. This is an event that really the organization is coordinating to recognize contributions to the committee, to the community. But it's a good opportunity to make sure that that is something that all employees can be involved with. So we hope to continue contributing things like that, too.
Thank you very much. This is wonderful. It's so exciting when employees get involved in all the things that are going on. It means that we have a great workplace. And I want to take the opportunity to thank our county manager, John Slaughter, because I know he's a strong leader. And I firmly believe that good employees start from the top. And so if we've got a great leader, we're going to have great employees. And we do have great employees. So thank all of you very much. Commissioners, Mr., Commissioner Jung.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just take the time to bring people's awareness that one of your accomplishments or missions is to encourage and facilitate a customer service culture. I love that. I've been beating on that for 10 years, coming from a place of yes rather than no. And I have, and I have no other answers for you, right? So that, to me, is incredible because that will change our culture. The other, you said you do the chef's night throughout the county. I also would encourage you to reach out to the Eddie House because they don't have a commercial kitchen. So anything that the kids get to eat there is like stuff you can put in the microwave. And people do volunteer evenings where they come bring food to have a sit-down, family-style dinner. So you might want to reach out to the rest of the employees who might be interested in that avenue as well. And then, sorry. I have a question, which I've asked the DA an opinion on and the manager, and haven't really got an answer yet. And that is, do you guys also facilitate the employee whistleblower program or are looking into policy like that or have anything? Do you touch that at all?
No, that's not part of what we do with this program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartung.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank you for your community engagement and involvement. I'm always proud and it never ceases to amaze me how often our employees are out and engaged in the community. And I just, I thank you for that because you are making a difference. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jung.
I just forgot one more thing. And that is, your committee and your volunteerism is really a reflection of why I believe public servants are the best people on the planet. And it's just in your blood. And you see a problem, you're always out there saying, how can I help? So thank you for taking that calling and executing it here in a way that improves the whole community. But most importantly, the morale of people here that do such a wonderful job to keep this county running and safe and healthy and sheltered and all the things that we do as a county. I appreciate it and I, it's my favorite people in the world are public servants. So, and this is why. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Mr. Manager.
First, we have two members who didn't, weren't part of the presentation. Perhaps they could introduce themselves and tell us what they, you know, which committees they're involved with.
My name is Vicky Jacobowski and I am the chair of the Events Committee.
And I'm Sharon Flannery and I'm the chair of the Recognition Committee.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
And then, Madam Chair, again, as I mentioned, this was, I was very much looking forward to today's presentation. This was kind of just a little idea that I had and I just handed that off. And you can see where, how much it's grown. And I suspect that this will continue to grow. We've done many, many programs over the years on leadership development and employee, all these employee programs. And my real goal is a sustainable program. And really, the way to do that is what you're seeing today is really having the employees be the ones who say, this is what, this is how we want to make it work. And that's how it's going to be sustainable. So again, I just want to thank our members that are here today, as well as I know we have others who are in the audience, including department heads who are involved in this. It's really a great program throughout because we have, you know, staff who are every day providing service to the county, who are involved, all the way up to department directors, who are involved in providing the advice to the program. So again, thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I want to say also that so frequently, people look to the elected officials and think that they're what makes a county or a city good. And the reality is, we know that that's not true. Without you, we couldn't do anything. You guys really are the reason this county functions the way it does, all of our employees. And so thank you for everything you do. And really, thank you for this project. I'm so proud of you. I just think it's a wonderful idea and I appreciate all the work you do. Thanks. Mr. Manager, I believe we are on to 15.
We are on to 15, which is an update on the wildfire season. And Chief Moore is here for this item.
And Chief Moore just provided me with a map, which I'll distribute to the board and place on the record.
Thank you. Good morning, Chief. How are you? It is still morning even.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair. I am well, thank you. Hope you're well as well. Charlie Moore for the record, Truckee Meadows Fire District Chief. I just wanted to briefly review the Woodchuck Fire with you. We do have a cause which we're not quite ready to release yet, but that will be forthcoming in the next few days. If I could have the map put up on the big screen, giving you a map of the burn area of the Woodchuck Fire, and as you can see, that there were probably about 30 homes that were the fire burned directly up to their backyards. And so we got very, very close to a number of properties there. The final number on the burned acreage was just under 50 acres, and actually split between three jurisdictions of Reno Fire, Truckee Meadows, and the United States Forest Service. So again, a successful outcome to that particular fire, that no structures were damaged, no residential structures were damaged. So we're starting to see a diminishment now of actual fire starts because of the rain that we've had and the cooler temperatures, so hopefully we'll see some more moisture that will, that will come here, hopefully in the month of October. For, if, Madam Vice Chair, if I may, just show the video that I had shown, I think, a meeting ago for Commissioner Jung's benefit, shows the firefighting effort as the fire got close to Aspen Glen. So it's just- So as the fire got into that group of willows there in the Hunter Creek drainage is when I really started to get nervous, because it was starting to burn fairly actively, but fortunately, the helicopters there got just, got there just in time.
Chief, where were they pulling the water from? Out of the river?
Out of the Truckee River, yes, ma'am.
I have, Mr. Manager, I have you listed on here as wanting to speak? Oh, okay.
I'm very thankful.
Yeah, very thankful, since that's where your family lives, right in that area. Fascinating, really great that you guys were so competent in getting it down again. Again, I would thank all of the fire districts who helped you, and the fire departments who helped, and all of our firefighters who came in. We truly are blessed that you guys have done what you have done with this whole project. So Commissioner Hartung.
Chair. I'd just like to draw the board's attention to the map, and what you don't realize, this is a very two-dimensional view of this, and how challenging the topography is, and how successful all three agencies were in working together to extinguish this fire quickly and with, you know, virtually, I don't think, there was no loss, was there, Chief, in terms of personal property?
Just two construction trailers that were tow behind, types of vehicles, so I would estimate their value at probably $8,000 each, so, you know, about $15,000.
No homes were lost.
No homes were lost.
That was my point. And I think you guys did a phenomenal job at containing it. Again, very, very challenging. You saw, you saw the video, and how quickly they were bringing in one after another load of water, and how steep the terrain was that those firefighters were working on. And, you know, it's just, it's, you guys did a phenomenal job, and again, all of, all of our responders. TM, of course, the Forest Service, and Reno Fire, everybody working together. I mean, there was a wonderful, successful outcome, and fairly rapidly, so well done again, Chief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of our constituents was here earlier this morning, and he touched on, what are we doing more for prevention, and changing human behavior, and how we might be able to address that going in the future? So if you could bring that at a next meeting when you're ready, to talk about that, I think that's a great idea, because it was shooting, or it was sparks from a tire, and, you know, if they're human caused, then they can be human corrected, hopefully. So that was kind of his point. And then, there were hikers, I understood, that were on the trail here? Did you, did that ever pan out? I mean, like, what happened? What do you do if you're on a trail and there's a fire?
Well, that's a very good question, Commissioner Jung. You need to be very aware of where the wind's blowing, where the fire's coming, and self-rescue, because it's going to be very difficult for us to get to you if there's fire between the hikers and us. We could rescue them with helicopters if need be. But I think, I believe that there was a reference on the radio transcript of construction workers trapped behind the fire, but I'm not aware of any hikers.
Okay. That went out at one point in the media, there were two hikers, and they were trying to make contact, so it must have resolved itself, but that, that's, okay, good. That's scary.
Yeah.
And you're right, Commissioner Hartung, that, we dodged a big bullet there. I mean, that was, like, the gods were smiling, the wind was doing our thing, you know? Because I've seen all over Facebook pictures of people's backyards and stuff, and it's right up to their fence. And those poor people, that's the same people that we evacuated with the last fire up in that area. And so, one thing I also would like to look at, Mr. Fire Chief, is when we are doing regional planning and development, can we be a little bit more proactive in not letting people build in these fire-prone areas? It's always, burns there every year, in Collin Ranch, every year. So I'm not saying that we're going to take your homes and similarly situate you. What I'm saying is that when we go into further developments, and we can identify that this area is high risk for this fire behavior, that we require developers to do, you know, sprinklers in their homes, things like that, to help preserve their private property. So can we look at that, and kind of identify a map out, maybe inform regional planning where we really don't want you to develop, based on firefighting and fire behavior and the history?
Absolutely. And the wildfire hazard zone map is a bit dated, so it's timely that we update again and identify what areas are high hazard and what-
Great. And then we should push that out to developers, saying, you know, this might not be the best place, and we're maybe going to hold you to this a little bit.
Well, it's important to identify those areas, because the Wildland Urban Interface Code will drive certain regulations then to developments-
Okay, great.
-depending on where they're at in the hazard area.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would be remiss if I did not thank law enforcement as well, who, I mean, when you look at the photographs of the streets, how well-coordinated law enforcement was, whether it was the SO or Reno. I mean, they, everybody did a great job. I mean, and it demonstrates that when these things break out, how coordinated our agencies are, regardless of whether they're across jurisdictional lines.
Yep.
And I was just, I was very, very impressed with how quickly everything was mobilized, and again, on all fronts, all first responders across the board.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one thing, just a reminder, this was at Red Flag Day, and so there are conditions that we know that are exacerbated on Red Flag Days. We certainly, my staff will work with Chief on Commissioner Jung's request. And then I couldn't let the hiking item hang, since I have led many hikes in my life. One of the first things you need to do is let someone know where you're going, and when you're at the trailhead, leave a note in your car that says, "We've left at this time, we expect to be back at this time, we have this number of people with us." That's, just letting other people know what you're doing and where you are would be important.
Yeah. Great idea. Great idea. Anything else? Thank you very much, Chief, for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
It's you.
And Madam Manager, we, or Madam Chair, we do have a public comment request?
I, there's no action on this, it's a no-action item, so I don't think we could-
Okay.
-take public comment. Is that correct, Mr. Attending?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The item is not designated for action, so you're not required to take public comment. I would note that the next item on the agenda is public comment.
Yes, it is. All right. So we will close item 15 and move on to item 16, which is public comment. I still have Manager Slaughter listed on my list, but I don't have anybody else listed for public comment.
On 16, we do. We have Kathy Brandhorst.
Okay. Ms. Brandhorst? Guess it's not showing up on my list, but I wonder what she does.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, on the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, I did help out a couple of times, you know, with the fire, trying to put out the fires, but we did not have access to any aircrafts, you know, to put out the fires. So I am glad, you know, to see the aircrafts going up to put out the fires a lot faster, because all we used was water hoses and water. Also, I just wanted to let you know about the Crossroads. Crossroads has been trying to steal buildings. They tried to steal that building, but they are not accessed to the building at all to open up to the homeless people. Crossroads knows that they don't own the building, they don't have access to it at all, and they need to stay out of the building, otherwise they will be arrested. Crossroads has been known for prostitution, too, and I just heard a speaker not too long ago, she was bringing up Eddie House, and this has been a great big problem with prostitution there. We don't want this Eddie House in the area, we would like to have it closed down and to the public. There are no young children in that house, I hope not, because you have indicated they're only from 12 to 24 years old, but I don't believe that at all. I've seen them so old, like in their 40s and 50s, homeless, again, because they are on death row. I just wanted to let you know that the abuse towards children is still going on on C Street. The abuse is causing lots of problems where I live, and we have a small child, there he is, he has no legs. He was, the adult came out with the electric chainsaw and sawed off his legs, and he was screaming, because that is very painful before he passed out. I just wanted to let you know that that kid today is walking, but he has to walk on stilts. And this is not fair for a four-year-old boy to be walking like that with no legs at all, because if an adult said, "You know too much about me, then I'll chop off your legs."
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. I have no further public comment, so we will bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Item 17, Commissioner and County Managers Announcements, Reports, Updates, Requests for Information or Topics for Future Agendas.
You have anything, Mr. Manager?
I would mention, and it was mentioned briefly in the Washoe Leadership Program, October 12th is our Washoe Impact Awards presentation. It is a transition from what we formerly would do for our state of the county, and we will be recognizing the impact that all of our employees have-
Here in the chambers?
Every day. Here in, we begin in the atrium, I believe at 4:30, and then we'll move into the chambers where we give out the awards.
Perfect. Commissioner Hartung? Commissioner Jung? All right. With that, we are adjourned.